Okay, my clock says it's six o'clock, so we will, if everyone will take their places and pay attention to what's going on. We will start the impact fee advisory committee meeting. Yes, thank you very much. I know everybody wants to talk and get together and so, but we got business we have to conduct, so would you please call the roll?
Dawn Cana.
Can't hear you.
Debbie Moore.
Here.
Cynthia Meyer.
Present.
Ishmael Harris.
Here.
Carrie Kahler.
She's on her way.
Patrice Parsons. Judah Ross.
Present.
Kristy Koch. David Barrow.
Present.
We have five members of the Planning and Zoning Commission present, and we have our impact fee person here, so we do have a quorum. Do we have any citizen comments? Citizen comments can be on anything, not on the agenda.
Not at this time.
Have no citizen comments, so we will go straight into the workshop. Three A is a presentation and discussion on the transportation impact fee study process and land use assumptions. Please let the record show that Ms. Kahler is here.
Good evening. So tonight I'm going to introduce Jake, it's ruined your last name, Jake. He's with Kemely Horn, they've worked on some other transportation projects for us, but right for tonight he's going to talk about transportation impact fees, and this is the first of a series of meetings that he'll be coming to, to educate and go over the assumptions that are in the study. On, the ultimate goal is to present to city council some transportation impact fees that as developers build, they pay into those rather than have to do individual TIA's and other things, so, but I'll let Jake explain all that in detail.
Okay, so let's give us a little thumbnail, we've got some folks that are fairly new, so just give us a little thumbnail description of what the impact fees are.
He's going to go over it all in his presentation.
All in your presentation, way to go.
I got it from here Jennifer, thank you. Yeah, so I'm Jake Gudickeunz, which means good art in German, I also like to go by Jake from State Farm, whatever you prefer. So, I don't want to sell insurance though, but I'm happy to be here tonight, thank y'all for having me. I'm going to give a little bit of an overview of transportation impact fees, what are they? The 101, and then we actually have some of our assumptions that go into the study that are required by the state law. So kind of a quick thing on these, there's a lot of different ways to fund transportation infrastructure in cities. Right now, I'll get into it in a second, but y'all have a block code or building block code, B3, so folks are required to build blocks, as y'all, some of y'all that have served for a while are probably aware. Other ways to do that is through a transportation impact analysis, another way to do that is through fees or other things like development agreements, so there's a lot of ways to do it. BASTROP's growing really fast, I'm sure y'all are very aware, and so when you're in a high growth community, sometimes this is a tool that can be used to be equitable, flexible, and transparent, and when you do that, so I'm going to go, yep.
We do have some new members, like I said, so I would like to encourage them, if you have questions.
Yes.
Jake's here to answer them, so there's no dumb question, if you have questions, just ask them.
Yep.
Thanks.
And I'll get into some of it as I go, but feel free to interrupt me if we get through stuff that you want me to answer. So, also apologies, anything that says CIAC, that is y'all, it's Impact Fee Advisory Committee. The state law actually calls it the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, so there's a, what y'all are being asked to do as part of this process is, you're supposed to be reviewing the assumptions that go into the fee calculation. Those two assumptions are how much growth is projected in a 10-year time period, those are also collectively referred to as the land use assumptions. I'll show you some of those here at the end tonight, some draft projections of that in BASTROP, as well as a capital improvements plan, which is roadway expansion projects that increase automobile capacity to serve that 10 years of growth. So those are the assumptions that go into a rate calculation of what the city could legally charge in BASTROP to development. As we go through the process, there are two public hearings. One of those is on the study assumptions, which is the two ones I just mentioned, and then there's a separate public hearing to adopt an overall study which sets a maximum rate that could be charged, and then council would decide based on what this, partially based on feedback from this group, what y'all think a appropriate rate, if any, would be to charge for development for transportation. Any questions on that? That's kind of a big nutshell of where we're headed. Good? Okay. Where are we at in the timeline? Sorry if it's a little bit small, we're very early, so we're at the beginning stages of this. As Jennifer said, we're going to be coming back a couple of different times, in fact, we're hoping to come back actually next month to talk about the projects, the capital improvements plan, that last part of the assumptions, and then from there it's really showing what is that maximum fee that could be charged, and if y'all do want to do any kind of fees, how much would they be? Are there any kind of discounts or reductions, or should it vary based on where you are in the city? Should it vary based on the development type, whether it's residential, commercial, or some other kind of thing? A lot of times these are flexible policies that allow you to use them as kind of levers for development types in the community too, so that discussion can go as long as y'all want. We'll try to contain those kind of conversations to about two other meetings, so including tonight, we would try to meet about four times over the next six or seven months, so I just wanted to give y'all a heads up on where we're headed for that. So I mentioned there's a lot of ways to fund transportation, there's two categories, one is existing needs and another one is growth needs. Impact fees cannot be used to pay for the existing category. You can't use them on maintenance, you can't use them for operational costs, and you can't use them when you have a road that's, it's just really aged out and needs to be rebuilt, but you're not expanding the capacity, which is something also called capital renewal. So as you get aging roads, sometimes you have to rebuild them, but this is only for extra capacity to serve growth in the community. There's a couple of different funding mechanisms, it's a long list. Everything in black is stuff that can be used to pay for the maintenance category or existing needs. Everything in the red is stuff that is tools for trying to fund infrastructure for growth. So impact fees is one of those, you can do development districts like tax increment reinvestment zones, TIRSs, 380 agreements like developer agreements, sometimes you can do it as a MUD as opposed to it being a city service, or you can use a traffic study like a traffic impact analysis. So there's a lot of options there to pay for it. Interestingly enough, there's more to pay for growth than there are for maintenance, which is interesting, but it is one of those things that, it's an important consideration of how it's done. And then in y'all's case, it's not on the list, but for growth, y'all also have a, your code requires the grid structure for blocks, is kind of how it's been done for the last couple of years in BASTROP. Why is this important for growth? So one of the things that's interesting is why are we talking about impact fees now? Is one of the questions I get in a lot of communities. When you grow at a slower rate, you can usually absorb it in your existing funding mechanism a little bit better. So New York City is about 8 million people in city and 20 million in that area, they grew at 1%, historically, but it was over 200-plus years. So they got really big, but they went slow enough where they were able to build the infrastructure as they went, and it wasn't a big burden. Central Texas is a different story, we're growing at 10% or more. I last checked, I think it was last year, both Georgetown and Leander cracked 10% on the growth rate scale, and I know BASTROP's growing very fast as well, so in the upper single digits. So, another big thing that's going on that's causing these topics to come up is the federal and state funding is not really keeping up. From an educational standpoint, the state of Texas, a lot of the money that goes towards TechDOT, the state system and things like that comes from the gas tax. That's a flat rate number of cents that hasn't changed since 1996. So as you can imagine, that didn't really have an inflation factor baked into it, so a lot of the money that would trickle down to the cities like BASTROP is not happening as much anymore, so it's trying to get creative on how it can fund it. And then in Texas as well, legally, there's not as many options as some other states on how to pay for stuff. So that list I showed you, while it's long, it's shorter than some other places of what you can get. And then one of the things that usually works out is, especially for existing residents, existing residents don't want to pay the burden for growth that's coming in, so how do you get that growth to pay for itself? Or growth should pay for growth, is another reason why these are popular. I mentioned current practice, you have a grid block structure that's required. If you don't do that, right now the current practice is to require a developer to do a traffic impact analysis to determine how else would you serve growth for transportation on their site. So what is the roadway network going to look like instead? Do you have adequate traffic? Do you need lights? Do you need other things to serve that? Do you need turn lanes? Things like that. This process is very much a negotiation, is a lot of times what it turns into, you're kind of trying your best to figure it out, you're working back and forth to try to figure out what it is, and then a lot of times those improvements are very specific, on what the dollars can be spent on, so they're constrained dollars, and then there's a lot of uncertainty on the front end of where you're going to end up. So when they start the traffic study process, the study itself costs a bit of money for the developer, they have no idea at the beginning of that what they're going to end up paying on the backend. With an impact fee, you can go in and say, I'm looking at buying a piece of land, if I put this on it, this on it, or that on it, they could actually go in, at the end of the process, we'll have some sort of calculator if it's adopted, and they could actually play around and see what kind of development type works out for them with their pro formas and trying to figure out what their total costs are for their site. So it's a lot more predictable when you have an impact fee. Impact analysis is a bit messier, to say the least, so. It was the practice prior to the 2019 code, that was the way things worked in BASTROP for transportation. This is some scenarios.
Quick question.
Yep.
We're talking about funding growth and how impact fees cannot be used for maintenance. How is in BASTROP, how is maintenance currently funded?
Maintenance is funded through the general fund, and it's either current taxes that are collected, well, it's current taxes collected, and we do issue debt, so COs, we issue bonds to get, to do large projects, and then they have to be paid off with a debt service by the city, so, through tax funds, so it's all taxes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Keep going. So, so two big questions I always like to ask is when you're trying to figure out how to pay for growth, the fundamental question is how do roadways get built, and is that system of having them built fair? So I know that the B3 code does have a block system, but there's also some additional larger facilities that are called like multimodal roads and things like that, or if you abut your property next to a state facility, for example, they may have requirements on what you have to build. So this actually has some design examples to illustrate how, when you build border streets to your site, it can become less, not exactly fair in a lot of communities, so, and the example shown, we have sites that are the same size, so number one in red and two in green, those are the same size development, 250 houses in a strip center, 2,000 square feet, kind of along the frontage. Site one was basically a property that waited for the infrastructure to come, so they've got a nice arterial sitting next to their site, think maybe like a 304 where it's built out over by Home Depot now. If they came in and developed, they don't have to improve the road next to them, so they're not really having to do a whole lot. Site two though, it's on the corner of some old country road, think of like FM20 or some other, 969, kind of going up to the north, and they have to actually go and expand the old county road or the old TechDOT road to make it wider and pay a lot of money. So those two sites, while they're building the same thing in the city, are having very different impacts in terms of what they're having to build. A common thing we'll talk about is the, with the traffic studies and/or border streets, it's the last person in has to pay the bill, is how it works, or once it breaks, someone has to pay for it to fix it. And so a lot of these systems have that challenge within them of how do you be fair to different developers? It's just kind of luck of the draw of where your property is and where, when the growth hits, or when the city decides to build a project next to your site. Three and four are similar to that, that's a frontage issue, same thing, it's a smaller residential development with 50 houses or townhomes, however you want to look at it, but one has four times the frontage, so they're paying four times the amount to try to get the road improved. Five and six is the most drastic example, if you have a future road extension running through your sites, if it's running down the middle of it, you might have to build the whole thing and dedicate right of way for the whole thing through it, whereas the other site, while it's five to six times bigger, in purple, number six, runs along the boundary of that road and only has to build half of it. So while they're drastically different, five and six are actually paying the same, or putting the same amount of money in. So the question is, is it fair and how should roadways get built? Are kind of the things we're trying to answer.
Are you saying that because five borders both sides of the roadways?
Yeah, it's designed very intentionally, basically, it's roughly a half mile of road running along the edge, they would maybe build half the road and dedicate half the right of way, whereas five would be one where it's running through the middle, so they're building all four lanes and dedicating the full right of way, and it's a quarter mile, so roughly, it works out where they would be the same. It was designed to show you kind of how that could work out where they would have the same amount of impact on their sites, so. So I mentioned a few of these earlier, some of the things that you, this is irregardless of what kind of system would be chosen to fund transportation in the city, some things that we maybe could agree on that would be good is predictability is a big deal, especially in the development world, knowing what's coming, being able to do the thing I said earlier, like look at a site and say, I know what my fees would be before I do anything, or even maybe buy the land. You can't do that today necessarily. You want it to be equitable, so same, different property owners that are near each other, or the one ranch next to the others getting the same treatment. Transparent, there's not a whole lot of question marks in this process either. Flexible is important, I mentioned a minute ago about those traffic studies, a lot of times they'll say, this is money to build a traffic light here or a turn lane here, whereas the city overall may have other needs that are more pressing. When you do an impact fee system, there are zones set up, I'll get into in a second, that are called service areas, and they're different from water, wastewater, I'll explain that to impact fees, but the funds can be spent within the area that are collected. So if there's higher priority projects, you can actually use this program to pool money together to build entire projects. A lot of times what you have a challenge with the studies is there's a percentage of the improvement that's being given by the developer, but it's not enough to cover the costs, the city would have to make up the delta. So that's one of the challenges with some of those systems too. Want it to be legal, that's what we're here for, we're going to try to make sure everything is done very well, buttoned up and compliant with the law. Chapter 395 of the local government code is the one that specifies all of this, as well as the required composition of this body for the impact fee advisory committee. And then we want it to be consistent with the city's goals and objectives, that's what we're going to get into in those later meetings of what is the direction of the city headed in, and are there ways to reflect that in this, if this policy were to be implemented? What do some of those things look like? Questions on that? Okay. So more detail on these, I mentioned these are governed by chapter 395 of the local government code. These are a one-time fee, it's not a recurring thing, it's when development occurs and it's paid at building permits, so it comes kind of later in the development process, so before, when someone applies for a building permit, this is the time it would come due. There are four kinds of impact fees in Texas, water and wastewater, which y'all are probably familiar with, roadway and then drainage impact fees, the only city in Texas with drainage impact fees right now is Houston, and roadway impact fees are in a couple dozen communities, a lot of them in North Central Texas and then also in Central Texas, are kind of the two main areas with them. In this area, this was actually all, except for New Braunfels, in the last five years, all the cities on that list have implemented impact fees, so Austin, Flugerville, Round Rock, Hutto, Georgetown, and Leander have all adopted new impact fees for roadways in the last five years. Probably reminiscent of some of the growth that's going on in the area, it's picked up a lot of steam. New Braunfels actually just had them since 2008, so they actually got them earlier. Georgetown looked at doing it in 2009, the economy changed and they decided not to do it, so, just economic climate changed. And then Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex has quite, several dozen communities have this, it's pretty commonplace actually to have them.
Is roadway the same as transportation?
It is, sorry, similar to CIAC that I quoted in my head earlier, roadway is what the state law calls it, but for just the kind of sake of understanding here, we're calling them transportation.
And do we currently have any impact fees in BASTROP? Water, wastewater?
Water and wastewater, yep.
Okay.
There's in place, I don't know what, how long the city's had them, I don't know if you know that off the top of your head, but, so it's been in place since 1987, so, 1990s is when most of the communities adopted water, wastewater, impact fees, was kind of when that wave hit the state, so a lot of them are kind of predated to that time period. So there's a lot of components to it, I'll move through these quickly, it's not a huge thing. One of the big ones that's really important to understand, water and wastewater, or water and sewer impact fees, they can go into the ETJ. Roadway impact fees or transportation impact fees cannot. Part of the reason for that is, once you get into the county, the county has jurisdiction and some level of ability to pay for roadway infrastructure, whereas a lot of times when you get out past the city limits line, you're on septic tanks for sewer and you may have wells instead of a water system coming out to you. So with roadways, they don't just stop at the city limits line where the growth ends, it still keeps going out because the state and the counties do that, so that's why it's a little bit different. The other unique thing about these is because it can't go into the ETJ, another provision was that these areas where you can collect and spend money that I mentioned, they can't be more than six miles. And I kid you not, that's what the language says, it says six miles, it doesn't tell you what that mean, but we've interpreted that to be, with most communities we've worked with, is a six-mile trip or travel length, so you can't go more than six miles and stay in the same area. I'll show you later with the assumptions, but we've looked at BASTROP and it's either on the edge or a little bit in excess of six-mile trip lengths within the city you can do now, so we're looking at two areas within BASTROP. But that is a special consideration, it's a little bit different, because you would actually have to do the growth projections, the projects, and the collections all within these areas, and they kind of stay as self-contained little districts, is how they have to operate in terms of funding and spending. I mentioned about collecting resources and revenues to pay for projects, it has to all occur in those zones, it can't move from one zone to another once you establish those, so. Questions on that? Okay.
Do you have some maps so I can get an idea of?
The areas?
Six-mile trip.
Oh, yeah, I'll show you, we're going to have that come up here in a few minutes, so, yep. So the growth projections, a lot of times what we want to do is we just want to make sure that we're accurately estimating what we think the projections are going to be. A lot of times we'll do that in coordination with whatever the comprehensive plan says, the future land use maps, and other city documents, and then we'll calibrate that based on what the growth has been like, to make sure that we're not over underestimating the growth. We'll show you all a sample of what we think that might look like in 10 years in BASTROP in just a minute. Service units, so this is how the actual fees are calculated if you implement them. With water and wastewater, it's very simple, a water meter to a site is of a certain size, and so the fee chart is just the size of the water meter that goes to the development. Transportation's not as simple, people don't just flow into a pipe and then come out the other side. There's a lot of roadways, there's options of where you can go. So for roadway, what we use is called a vehicle mile, is the base unit that we use, that's one vehicle going one mile in the afternoon time of the day, which is when it's most congested in BASTROP. So what we actually do, if we would calculate the fee, is there's a conversion chart that's a little bit larger, to be honest, and it's got a lot of different land uses on it, and it'll tell you how many vehicle miles does one house or 1,000 square feet of a strip center or some other type of development generate. And so that's how we actually calculate what the fees would be. So it's a little bit more complex, but, and that's, I'll explain how we get, what is a cost for a vehicle mile in just a minute, how we get there. So how would you apply that? So in the chart itself, there's two pieces that go into that service unit. One of them is the amount of trips that are coming out, called the trip rate. So a house on average generates about one trip in the afternoon peak per house. A strip center is a little different, it's, in this case, a shopping center or strip center would be a little less than four vehicles in the afternoon for every 1,000 square feet of shopping space. And then there's some other adjustments that are made there, based on if you're going home, on your way home, and you're stopping in somewhere, that's called a pass-by trip, so we don't double count trips, there's a lot of mechanisms we do for that. And then the trip length is the second component, so how far are people traveling? And that's going to be very specific to the city of BASTROP, we've got some fancy tools out there that look at all the cell phone data and tell us how far people are traveling here, so we'll get into that. What can you pay for with this? Things that can be paid for, construction cost of the expansions in that capital improvements plan can be, you can pay for traffic lights, you can pay for sidewalks and other things like streetlights, as long as it's associated with a roadway expansion, if it's all together in one package, you can pay for those. You can pay for the engineering design costs, you can pay for the property acquisition that may be required to put these roadways in, and another important one on here is you can actually pay for, if you have debt that's being serviced still and that you're paying down the debt for, but that project actually expanded capacity in the city, you can actually use the revenues to pay off the debt as well. So there's projects like that that the city's still paying debt for, we can include those and use these revenues to pay for that to reduce the debt load. And the cost of doing the study that I'm helping the city with is actually also eligible to be paid for, so, that does help a little bit. You can't pay for maintenance things, you also cannot pay for, one big one that we do in here is, I mentioned that this is a growth tool, and we can't pay for existing things, so part of the math we have to do is we have to look at how many cars are on the road today and discount whatever the cost of expansions would be. So if you've got a road that's existing today with two lanes, we build a four-lane road, we have to discount that for how many people are already using it, we can't just take the whole cost of all the four lanes. And we also can't use it to pay for any staff time to administer the program, that has to be paid for from something else. There's a really big chart you'll see someday with the detailed calculation, but what it comes down to is, I mentioned that vehicle mile cost, it is how much of the cost of the projects that can be recovered, I mentioned the existing cars on the road can't be recovered, and there's some other things we look at on there, it's the, how much in each of those areas of that cost can be recovered, divide that by how much new traffic is expected, and it's the cost per unit of new traffic in the future, that's what it really boils down to, in a simple say, that's what that number represents when we get to the end. So we'll tell you what you can charge, that's the maximum fee, and then with this group we talk about, is there an appropriate number that we think would be equitable or good or align with city goals? That's where we're headed on this. There's a couple other things that go into this, the, there are five-year required updates to the study at a minimum, so you can do it sooner than that, but the state law requires you to take a fresh look at all these study assumptions every five years, so just wanted to note that here. So an example, how would you apply this? So let's say the maximum fee, and this is not what I'm saying is going to shake out in the math, I'm not a soothsayer, but if it's $1,000 per service unit, per vehicle mile, if you had a multifamily apartment complex that came in with 350 units, let's say, and the conversion number was two for every unit that you have, so two vehicle miles per unit, you would take that number, multiply it times the units and the conversion factor and get your number, in this case it would be 700,000. Again, not saying that's what it's going to be in the city, but that's a number that it could in theory be, so we'll get to that number at some point, but this is how you would apply it. That would be the maximum, and then let's say, as a group and as council, let's say the decision was, let's charge only $200 of that, then it would be, instead of 1,000, it would be 200 times the rest of the numbers, is how you'd get there, so. Questions on that? Okay.
Why would we charge 200?
Why would you charge a different number? Yeah. So, a lot of different reasons why. One of the communities I just worked in with, Leander, they did not have economic development corporation money, so they wanted to incentivize commercial development, so they charged a lower fee to try to see if they could help that be an incentive for folks to come in.
Specifically for commercial?
For commercial, they charged less for residential as well than the maximum, they also wanted just to see how the revenues were, if it had an impact on the growth at all, and then kind of reassess over time. The thing is, I mentioned that five-year update cycle, so that maximum number is valid for up to five years, but the collection rate could change at any point, council has the ability to change that number over time, so.
Do you have data showing like how, how the fees or how the rates affect development in some of the surrounding communities?
Yeah, so I'll have a chart at some point when we get to the policy discussion about what other communities decided to do. What we have seen is, in places where these have been implemented, there have been communities where development kept speeding up, and other ones where it kept coming, or it came down a little bit. So we think that the larger economic forces have a larger impact on this, so that's one of the things, it's inconclusive, is the short answer on that, so, that's a good question. To answer that question too, a little bit here, one thing that we always like to be really cognizant of is, impact fees are not a silver bullet, they don't pay for everything that you need. So I mentioned earlier about the traffic on the roads, that's existing demand, so if you look at the pie chart in the red, think of that as a chunk of it that could be towards existing roads. Let's say we look at the study and we look at the project and say, hey, in 10 years with the traffic that's coming, they're not going to use all the capacity on these roads, we don't charge for the extra left over, that's the purple on here. By law, we're also required to do a calculation to see how much property tax the growth would bring in for the city, and discount that as well. So that's what this blue piece is. So what you're really left with at the end of the day is, on average, anywhere from 40 to 60% is where we end up of the total need, and then you're deciding, when I mentioned that 200 versus $1,000 on the last slide, that's what you're really deciding is, the yellow and the green, do you charge all of it, so instead of the yellow there, it's all green, or is there some sort of split? yellow there, it's all green? Or is there some sort of split? So, I'd circle that little line of, when we talk about percentages, it's not the percentage of the total need, it's the percentage of what's left over when we get to that point. So, just wanted to be clear about that. So, in this case, if you, if the choice was 25%, you're really getting 1/8 of your need covered by this program. So, just wanted to be clear about that.
I'm sorry, can you explain that again?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine. So, if we get to a maximum fee number, the maximum fee is only representing the yellow and the green parts of your pie chart of your need. This is, let's just say it's 50/50. The yellow and green makes up half. So, if you say we want to charge 25% of the maximum, you're really charging 25% of half of your need. So, you're really only getting 1/8 of your total need. That's what I was trying to say about that. So. Other things to consider on here. So, can you charge these two other government entities or other city departments? Yes. So, in theory, you could charge like for fire stations or police stations or other types of things within the city. Or if other outside state agencies were putting their development, or putting a building here, they would also be able to pay towards it. The only thing that's exempt from paying, there's actually two things. One of them is public school districts. So, if Bastrop ISD puts in a new campus, they are exempt from these fees. The only other one in there is something we'll say is a federal government defined affordable housing, which is a very strict threshold. It's a pretty low number in terms of the household cost, but those would also be exempt if they met the federal requirements for affordable housing. Cities can have their own definitions of what affordable or workforce housing would be, but that's the federal definition that's exempt as well. So. Checks and balances for this. Making sure we, politics versus policy, we're trying to keep it clean. We're preparing all this stuff independently. We're trying to make sure we're being unbiased in a lot of the stuff that we're doing and making sure it's as accurate as possible. And then, as a group, y'all are also ones that can actually help provide recommendations back to council at the end of the day of, yes, we think these assumptions are accurate. We want to accept the study or we don't want to accept the study. We'd like to make this change. Here's where we think charging should be, or no, we shouldn't collect fees at all, things like that. So, there's multiple groups involved in this process. The keys to a successful project, a lot of things go into these, but things that we've seen over the last couple of decades that are successful is having good master plans that really represent what you need, which is where we base some of our capital projects and land use assumptions off of. Making sure that people from the community that would be impacted by this are communicated with as part of the process. And then, we'll be bringing y'all what the, I mentioned impact fee market, what are neighboring communities charging? How are they doing things? We're going to have that information. So, y'all can see that, how would Bastrop compare if we did X, Y, or Z. And then, one of the other things that's really important is, it is a program that requires staff time to do it. So, being prepared for what does that look like? Several communities that have looked at these in the last few years are waking up to that reality, trying to get ready, get their systems ready to account for it. Their finance departments, their planning departments and other groups are having to gear up for it. So, it is a change. So, getting used to that change definitely takes some effort. At the end of the day, this is a sample from Round Rock, one of the first communities, but this is the forward facing piece. Anybody could actually pull a worksheet and fill out what their development is and put the land uses in it. It would actually tell them what that fee is. I mentioned earlier about, one of the cool outcomes of it is, you could literally know before you even come to Bastrop what your transportation cost would be with this new system, which is pretty cool. So, that is one of the outcomes that is in our scope to do. If it is adopted, we'll have a worksheet ready to go to show what those fees could be. So, at the end of the day, there's a lot of different ways to fund infrastructure I mentioned. Rate of growth is one important factor to consider. I'll definitely check that box. But then, just understanding what is the economic, political and development environment? You know, how do you want to craft this in a way that is complimentary towards what's going on in the city? Those are the things we want to get through. And then, one last thing I always like to say too is, the most successful programs are ones that get infrastructure built and don't collect revenue necessarily. So, while we'll get to the end of the day and have some revenue projections of what certain decisions y'all would make could be, we'll have some fun exercises on that later on where I can show you if we set it at this rate or this rate, how much would that mean in terms of revenue? The goal would be is that it's not actually checks collected, but roads and other things built for y'all. So, that's one of the, one of the things that we always try to encourage as part of that. The last bit here and then we're done. So, I mentioned we have some of the draft assumptions in here today. So, we mentioned that there's two service areas we looked at. Effectively, we're just basically having one area to the west of the Colorado River, then one to the east. A lot of times, it's best to pick a natural feature or a major highway to split. This was the one that seemed to be the best in terms of where the city is growing and seeing a lot of development coming in, is kind of shooting off to the west pretty fast. And so, we wanted to make sure that it wasn't an issue where you build one service area today, and then in three years, all of a sudden, you've got stuff that's way beyond the six mile limit. So, we were trying to be cognizant of that. And then, that's usually generally a pretty natural barrier for transportation. Crossing bridges, there's only so many of those to get across the river. So, a lot of times, people are standing on one side or the other of that. So, that was part of what went into that. Anything that's, the dash black red line is the existing city limits. There was one area, or two small areas actually, that are being shown as in the service area but aren't in city limits because they're going through annexation proceedings. And we anticipate those to be done before the study is complete. So, we wanted to make sure that we didn't get through the process and then immediately have some developments in large tracts of land that were not included at the time of adoption. So, we are looking at a couple of those. And anything that's kind of got a darker shading, either that's purple, red, or green, are developments that are anticipated in the next 10 years. So, that's, that was the basis for what I'm about to show you next, which is the projected growth over a 10-year period. So, over the next 10 years, based on a lot of the city's really good information on developments that are active and happening in the city or projected, it's showing that roughly 285 or 286 single family units per year is what's projected over the 10-year period. That doesn't mean it's going to be right at 260 a year. It's like, it could be a little bit less at the beginning and then continue to go up or down. But that's on average what we're looking at. And then, it's roughly two apartment complexes on top of that. I know that's a big number with 5,000, but that represents about two apartment complexes every year, per year, yeah, coming in. So, and there are several in the pipeline right now. So, it felt appropriate for that. And then, for the commercial, we break it out into different types of development. So, office, retail, and industrial. That's a pretty big number. It's in total over 6 million square feet over a 10-year period, about 600,000 a year. So, that's on par with what we're seeing as of late. So, that is what I had for y'all tonight. It was an overview and quick preview of the land assumptions. Are there questions on the land use assumptions or anything else I went through this evening?
Real quick?
Yes.
From the other studies that have gone into the surrounding communities, have you seen any glaring pitfalls to this?
When you say pitfalls, are you saying the outcomes that are like unexpected or? I have not. I think the only thing that I have seen in the other communities that is, can be a bit of a challenge is if development, I mentioned about building infrastructure is the goal. One of the things that a lot of communities have struggled with on the implementation side is, one, these policies can be a bit complex. So, how, implementing them well, understanding them. But when developments come in, if you want them to build infrastructure, a lot of times that requires to, on the front end, build things and get an agreement to get credit to that, not pay the fee. I don't know, but basically what I'm saying is, how do you get it to where it's easy and encouraged to build instead of write a check? That's the one thing I've seen. It's been a little bit tougher for folks on the front end of these programs to get right. So, it's been a bit of a learning curve on that of administratively, how do we make that simple for folks? Yeah.
We'll be seeing our friendly consultant back in the next few months. So, we'll have, I think he'll have more explanation and I'm sure that we'll have more questions. Are your growth rate assumptions for us compared to other areas aggressive, online, balanced? How would you?
I'd say it's a little above average, but not the highest. The highest one I've seen was probably Leander in Georgetown, which were growing the fastest. That kind of made sense. It was interesting because with Leander, they were showing, I think it was over half of the remaining growth in a 10-year window of what they could do in their entire city limits, which was on par with the permits they've been seeing. But y'all are, in terms of pace and amount, a little bit of above average for a community this size, but not in the same category as those other ones. So, yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
With that, we will close the February 23rd Impact Fee Analysis Meeting. And we will go, unless anybody needs a break, we'll go right on into the February 23rd Agenda and for the amended Planning and Zoning Commission, a little bit after 6:30, 6:38. So, will, please let the record show that Ms. Taylor is here, Ms. Parsons is here, and Ms. Koch is here. So, we have a full dius. So, Dawn, we'd love to have you stay, but you don't have to. I thought you just wanted to hang out, man. Okay. So, are there any citizen comments?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. Then, we will move on to item three, items for individual consideration. Item 3A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the January 26, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. We've had an opportunity to read them. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections? Motion to, by Ms. Parsons, to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Myers. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Item 3B, public hearing and consider action to recommend a zoning concept scheme to change the base zoning district from place type 2 rural to place type 5 core for 1.998 acres of the Nancy Blakely survey located at the northwest corner of FM 969 and SH 71 and forward to the March 28, 2023 council meeting. Ms. Bills?
Good morning. So, before we deny it, is a consideration for rezoning. And this is a property at the corner of SH 71 and FM 969. So, you can see it's highlighted there. There's currently an auto shop on the hard corner and then behind that, a house. So, the property owner is looking to rezone both properties. On our future land use plan, you'll see this area is categorized as general commercial in the future land use. This area was annexed in 2011, and at the time, it was given our base zoning district of Ag OS, which when we converted to the B3 code, it was given the designation of P2 rural, which allows very low density residential development. So, the request is to rezone both properties. One, so they can develop the property to the north, and two, to bring the property that's already there into compliance with the code by requesting a P5 designation. So, the use that's already there and the buildings that are already there are more in line with the P5 zoning, not the P2 rural for the auto shop. So, you can see, they did with their pedestrian shed analysis, this is the half-mile radius of the area. You can see right across the street is, my clicker's not working, is the Pearl River Development. That's the darker purple that just was rezoned last year. And then, the stuff to the south and the west is, they coded as P2 rural because it's currently not in the city limits, but should it annex in, that would be the designation that would be default given until we could consider rezoning. With the proposed site plan for the north site, they've shown that they'll be able to meet the code requirements, given the topography and their intended use of a similar use to the auto body shops, an automotive, commercial use. They did do a conceptual drainage plan that also showed that the drainage in the area, clicker is just not working for me, with the topography, the way the land falls, the drainage would go in front of the building between 969 and the building because that's the natural low point. And the conceptual drainage plan approved by the city engineer shows they'll be able to handle the drainage for this land use. So, just kind of the basics. It's a little under two acres site. They're requesting the rezone from the base district of P2 rural to P5 core, which is our highest intensity commercial district. And the conceptual drainage plan was approved by the city engineer. We did notify the property owners within the 200-foot radius of the properties. We received two responses that we received after the staff report was written and that we've provided. One was in favor and one was no objection. And staff's recommendation is to consider an action to recommend approval to city council for this rezoning. Any applicants here, if you have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
So, I'm aware that the 969 going on to 71 has been a fairly dangerous intersection in that a lot of people don't realize the 71's coming up. That's why they added the rumble strips. Is that correct?
I don't drive that area frequently, so.
Yeah. So, it's somewhat of a blind intersection until you get there. I saw that, so they want, why do they want to remove the driveway on 71 and only have 969 access?
Wouldn't remove the driveway on 71. They have currently two driveways on 969. And in talking with TechDOT, they would be able to approve the, with the code requirements it shows for the block structure, a right of way to the direct north of the property. And that distance is far enough away from 71 to that spot that they can take access from that, that point. It's a little, about 400 and, I think, 50 feet away from the intersection, which is, meets TechDOT's spacing requirements.
So, they'll still have 71 access?
Yeah, they'll still have 71 access.
Gotcha.
And those are all permitted by TechDOT.
Okay.
So, there still will be some study needed with TechDOT for how they're changing things.
Okay.
Any other questions? Now, we have to have a public hearing on this?
Yes.
So, if there are no other questions from the commission, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard?
I'm the advocate. I'd like to be heard for a moment.
Okay. Come right on up.
Hi, Jennifer. Really actually no questions or comments about the project. I hope it's agreeable to everybody. I just wanted to say on the record, be, I wanted to be frank about my experience working in Bastrop. I'm from San Antonio. I'd never worked here before. And Jennifer and her team are absolutely wonderful. Viviana, Melissa, Nicole, they were very generous with their time. They answered all of our questions, which were many, over and over again, I think some several times. And so, I just wanted that to be on the record. It was difficult at some times trying to figure some of this out, but your department's really wonderful. That's all.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. We know they work hard and try to get it right. So, if there are no other comments, I will close the public hearing and we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the rezoning of a zoning from place type 2 rural to place type 5 core.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please let the record show it passed unanimously. We will go on to item 3C, public hearing and consider action to recommend approval of an ordinance for amendments to the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Chapter 6, Section 6.5.003, building standards per place type, Authentic Bastrop Pattern Book, and Bastrop Code of Ordinance, Section 3.01.001, International Code Council, ICC, International Code Family Parent C, Close Parent Amendments to IBC 2018, fences not over seven feet or 2,134 millimeters high, and forward to the March 28, 2023 City Council Meeting for First Reading. Could that be any longer?
I could try. I probably could.
Excuse me, Chair Moore, just for this item and the remaining item 3D, just want to reflect for the record and consistent with the city council directions that Commissioner Koch will refrain and recuse herself from the deliberation in voting on these two items. Just putting that out there for the record and reminding of the duties.
Okay. Will she remain on the dius or should she exit the dius?
Just to be safe, I would say step down for the dius, but the remaining can be conducted with her up there.
Thank you.
So, this item is to discuss, this is specifically fences. All this section was a long way of talking about our fences. So, that's too easy to say fences.
That's right.
But in our codes, when we adopted the B3 code, we, and we adopted the international codes, 2018 codes shortly after. There's some inconsistencies between what the international codes say and what our B3 codes say and where those are referenced in the code. So, this is an effort to streamline and to clear up those inconsistencies. So, what the first kind of amendment is, is to add a reference into the actual B3 code itself that references that there are fence locations standards, but those are found in the Bastrop Code of Ordinance is Chapter 3. And that's where the, all the building codes are adopted and any amendments to the building codes are found in Chapter 3 of the Code of Ordinance. The second one is when we adopted the B3 code, we also adopted the Authentic Bastrop Pattern Book. And it was adopted with the statement in there that the pattern book was to be mandatory in the Iredelle and the historic Bastrop Commercial District. And then, the rest of town, it was to be more educational, inspirational. There are a few things within the pattern book that are actually required. So, fences were one of those items that had a specific requirement in the pattern book. So, we're removing the mandatory requirement from the pattern book and making it back to educational and inspirational for the entire city. So, within the document, the standards, any standards So within the document, the standards, any standards that we are taking away would be put into a different part of the code to be referenced more specifically and clearly. So this will be an inspirational document after the amendment is completed. And then the third section is to actually adopt how we want the fence requirements to read. And to do that, it's, we're adopting as an amendment to the International Building Code, Section 105.2, under work exempt from a permit. The building code only requires a permit for fences when they are over seven feet. Once they reach over seven feet, you have to have an engineer's seal on the plans that say they're structurally sound, meet wind resistance, those kind of things. So what this does is now require for fences that aren't over seven feet, that we have specific permitting requirements for those fences or in some cases exemptions. So the first is that for a replacement of an existing fence, so a like-for-like fence in the same location, there is no permit required. You can replace your entire fence with no permit. So you have a six-foot privacy fence in your backyard, you wanted to go back and replace that, no permits required for that replacement. The second is then to address the first layer in the B3 code, and I've got pictures here in a second. Instead of defining kind of different yard setbacks, we had a first layer, second layer, and third layer of the lot. The first layer is that area in front of the house. And so in that first layer, fences can't exceed four feet in height and have to have a transparency factor of 50%. So that means of the square footage of the fence, 50% of it has to be see-through. So a wrought iron fence, a picket fence, the kind of panel, wire panel fences, all those have a transparency factor. One of the things that has been consistent with the code prior to 2019 and then discussions we've had with the Historic Landmark Commission is that chain link doesn't meet that requirement. And that's something that I have questions on for PMZ here in a future slide. And then prohibited fence types or materials would be electric fences, barbed or razor wire material, and then any fence or wall that incorporates broken glass or protruding sharp edges aren't allowed on your fence. And that fences can't block the site triangle, which those requirements are in the technical manual of the B3 code that have requirements for driveways and at street corners to make sure that cars can see to pull out safely.
Can you remind us of what the first layer means?
That's what I'm, I'll get there in a second.
Okay, cool.
I did pictures. And then the last one is also then to also have a disclaimer that if there is a fence that's needed for public safety as determined by the Public Works Fire Chief or building official, that those fences would be exempt from permits. And since this is adopted in Chapter 3 under the building codes, if there's any variances or deviations from these standards, they would go to the Construction Standards Board as it's written in Chapter 3. So there's a process for requesting an alternative, an interpretation or variance in Chapter 3 to the Construction Standards Board. So getting back to what, what are we actually talking about? So here's my drawing. This is out of the code. So we have, clicker's going to be the death of me. So on the left, you have an interior lot. So this is a lot in the middle of a block. It's got house or property on either side of it. So the first layer is from the front of the house forward. That's your first layer. So in that case, you would be able to have a three, the four-foot fence would be anywhere in the front of the house. It could be up to four feet tall. And then from the front of the house back, your fence could be above four feet tall. And then on the corner lot, which is the one on the right, your primary frontage is the front of the house. Your first layer is facing the street there. And then you have a secondary frontage that's also on a street front. And so your first layer is again that area between the house and the street. So in this case, a corner lot would be able to have a four-foot fence in front of the house and then on the side, then they could start their six, above four-foot fence flush with the front, with the side of the house.
Where could you have a chain, a chain link fence?
Anywhere the orange is.
Anywhere the orange is.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just out of curiosity, what for the, for the four feet or less fence, what's the setback from, what's the setback for that? Is there one?
It can be right on the property line.
Okay, thank you.
Unless it's in the site triangle, but generally at four feet and with a transparency factor, it shouldn't be blocking the side triangles.
So previously it said that this was just for the historic district and Iredelle district. Is this now all of Bastrop? That's part of this proposal?
Yes, this would be all of Bastrop. The previous code didn't address fences outside of the Iredelle district, but it had what was allowed to encroach into the first layer and it didn't list fences as something that could encroach. This at least provides guidance on what can, what type of fences can be in that area.
Is this something that HOA regulations would override for a particular neighborhood or?
So if the HOA has, we don't enforce deed restrictions and we don't enforce HOA restrictions. Some of our neighborhoods in the area have their own specific zoning districts. So Hunter's Crossing is one that has its own fence standards that are written into their zoning districts. So those fence standards would apply, not these.
Okay. And the other subdivisions, this would take precedent over?
This would be what we'd approve. So if there's a conflict, we'll have to find that out. We don't enforce deed restrictions because you could have a deed restriction for a lot of different things that the city doesn't regulate.
But the HOA could enforce it, right?
Yes, the HOA can.
I just want to be sure I understand. So. I'm sorry. I want to be sure I understand the first thing you covered because this came up in the Historic Commission meeting. If a fence, a privacy fence is now, if it's over six feet, it has to have the engineering stamp.
Over seven feet.
Over seven feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this also means there's no height restriction on fences. So your neighbor could put up a 10-foot fence in their backyard as long as they want to go through the cost of engineering their fence.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And then I have questions for you all to consider. So to make, for your recommendation to council, are you okay with the locations for the four-foot fences? Is the first layer appropriate? Do you want to make some changes if it's the secondary frontage? The material fence types appropriate? Are you, do you feel a chain link is appropriate in the first layer in the front yard? And then are there any issues with not allowing barbed wire, razor wire, or electric fences? Typically, that's kind of a safety issue, especially when you're up along the street edge. And then are there any other things we haven't covered that you would like to discuss?
I'd like to speak to the, to the four foot height. I think that is a logical height because that is consistent with the international code, which requires a minimum of four feet around a pool. So that seems like an appropriate height to me.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I understand the barbed wire, definitely safety on that. Just why would we not just blankly, why would we not allow, or would there be a situation where you could have chain link? I'm just thinking there are certain applications sometimes where it could be appropriate. So why, what is the reasoning why we wouldn't want it all?
It's typically been an aesthetic reason. If there's contextual reasons that we could code in, we could do that. We'd have to identify like what situations and where those would be appropriate or you could just allow it by right.
Or if you have a chain link and you want to replace it with another chain link, that would be allowed or not?
Yes, because you don't, you're not going to be required to get a permit for replacement of what's there.
Got you. Just wanted to make it clear.
My question is, why would we allow an electrified fence or a barbed wire fence or a razor wire fence in an area where people can? We're not, okay, that's what you're saying. All right, thank you, sorry.
You are asking us that though, right?
Yeah, I'm just asking you that. So these are the standards as proposed. Are there any?
So proposed chain link is prohibited, right?
In the first layer. So you could have it in the orange area.
Understood.
But not where the blue line area is.
It's the man, Madam City Manager.
Hello. Thank you, Planning Commission. It is my opinion, first of all, the 48 inches, and we've had some variances. If you understand the cattle guard, it's sold in 36-inch rolls. By the time you frame it in, it's about 42 to 44. So that's where the 48 comes from. So it's just standard. We'll kill two birds with one stone. No more variances and it's a natural progression in the building code. The second part about chain link fence concerns me because as we work with the DEI, it will have a disparate impact on some of the north side residents. And so if our intent, and I will always go back to intent, if our intent is that we create a neighborhood where people want to come out and enjoy and it be transparent, does it matter if it's chain link or does it matter if it is a cattle guard? And my response is it doesn't matter. The intent is to encourage neighborhood participation. And so an aesthetic requirement that may have a disproportionate impact on some of our residents because of cost is something that you should be concerned about.
Can you describe what cattle guard fencing would be?
It is, it is a pretty wide square fencing of a certain wire and then it's.
Heavy gauge wire?
Yes, heavy gauge.
Heavy gauge is probably like four inches by four inches square.
Gotcha.
It's probably comes in like six to eight feet length and four foot wide.
So I did have that same concern about chain link. So chain link would be the most affordable option for, and we don't want to make any distinction in districts anymore, like with the historical district.
So again, we go back to the intent.
Yeah.
And the intent is, and my question originally when we were first talking about this is I have an Australian shepherd. He would have scaled that 36-inch like that, which would prevent me from wanting to participate in the front yard with my grandchildren because my granddaughter will scale that fence too. So as we talk about what are we trying to accomplish with our codes, we have to go back to determining, yes, exactly what am I trying to accomplish? And does a chain link fence really prevent me from accomplishing that? And my response would be no, that it does not. It is an aesthetic restriction, which you're at this point allowed to do. I just think it would have a disparate impact.
I appreciate that comment. And I would just like to add on to that, that I think if we start reaching so deeply as to what we are going, if we're not going to allow chain link, we are, we're not balancing everything. We're not having things equal. And I want everything, opportunities to be equal for everyone in this town. And I don't think it's fair for this side or this side or up there. I think why do we want, why are we worried about that? There are things I think that are more important to worry about, like coming outside and being able to have your family in your yard and your animals. So I think that's a little too nitpicky to worry about the chain link fence in the first layer, in my opinion. Thank you. Any other comment?
Have, have other cities shown that implementing policies like this actually do, does create more of a neighborhood feel and people are coming out? Is that something that's been studied?
Anytime you articulate a building closer to and you create a streetscape and a sidewalk and inviting as we're trying to do with trees and sidewalks, yes, there is a tendency to want to participate more in the outdoors. Fences don't necessarily make for a conducive, but fences make great neighbors. Again, I want to talk to my neighbor with my dog contained because he's really excited and so is the granddaughter. So it still allows me to be able to participate in my neighborhood and still have some sort of safety boundary for my pets and children. So from, from a staffing perspective, just give you the rationale where we are, as we look at staff resources and we look at everything that we're processing, is fences one of the things that we really want to do? And I'd rather govern by what is standard and not by the exception. And we're, yes, we're going to have people break the rules, yes. And we will have to deal with that on a one-off. But to write a regulation that will now require us to be, an onerous one for staff internally in terms of the permit itself, the cost to the resident, and then also the code enforcement aspect that goes along with that and the inspection cost and the administrative cost, it just doesn't make any sense.
I tend to agree that chain link fences should be allowed wherever any other fence is allowed.
I agree as well.
Okay.
One final question?
Sure.
Hopefully this is an easy one for you, Jennifer. Is this a blanket for all residential and commercial throughout Bastrop or just residential?
Commercial and residential.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Are you, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Done.
All right. We will open the public hearing on this?
I just have one question. It's not that I disagree with the chain link fence. I'm just wondering what kind of backlash we're going to get from everybody that we've made to a four-foot fence and does that matter? Because we've been forcing a lot of people to, you know, do four-foot fences and.
Three-foot fences.
Three-foot fences.
So the current code is three-foot and yeah.
And I mean, again, if we change the code, we change the code. But I'm just saying that we're, we really are going to get some backlash, which I can handle backlash.
What's the history on that?
I mean, I'd have to pull the notes, but I don't know that we've had a lot of three-foot fences installed in the last three years since the code was adopted. And there were requirements prior to that for restrictions on fence height in the old code as well. So the code continues to change and that, it is what it is.
I would just like to comment, and I appreciate your comment, Commissioner. However, I think when we know better, we do better. And this is, we are changing. This is living. When we know more, things that do work, things don't, like we're finding out in the codes, let's make them work. And I think that is the answer. If we know now, we're improving things, we're trying to make it better for our citizens, let's do it.
All righty. This is a public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing on this matter. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak from the public?
No.
If we've seen we have none, I will close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion with any amendments that the commission would like to make.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment with the recommendation of allowing chain link fences in the front layer.
So remove.
Remove, yeah.
Two A.
Remove that. So we can allow it. Correct. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Are there any other changes the commission wants to make? If not, let's call the roll, please, ma'am.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Carrie Kahler?
Yes.
Patricia Parsons?
Yes.
Judah Ross?
Yes.
Kristi Coe? Oh, sorry. David Barrow?
Yes.
And Pete, it won't be the first thing that we've gotten backlash on.
Comes with the territory.
Okay. And I believe that item, are we done with that?
Yes.
So item 3D.
And so that'll actually be going to the next council meeting on Tuesday, not the 28th, so.
Okay. And item 3D has been?
Yeah, on the advice of our attorney, some additional review that we need on this one, it's recommended that we pull this item to the next meeting or to a later meeting.
I'm not quite ready for prime time. So we'll move on to item 4, item 4A, update on recent city council actions regarding planning department item. And Ms. Coke, if you'd like to join us, your seat's ready for you.
So we don't have any updates from council. We have had another public improvement plan agreement, which is one of the steps in plating for developers for residential neighborhood for the Pecan Park section. So, but we will have at the next, on the February 28th, this amendment will be going to that meeting. And then on the March 28th is when we'll be forwarding the zoning to city council.
Okay. Item 4B, Planning and Development Department Monthly Project Volume Report.
So we're still a little bit on the slower side for the month of January. We have actually picked up in the month of February, we've got the second phase of Bastrop Grove is coming in. So that's, but yeah, for the month of January, we were a little slower with winter and just people, kind of development slowing down in the winter, so.
Any question? Okay, then we'll move on to item 4C, individual requests from planning and zoning commissioners that particular items to be listed on future agendas. Does anyone have anything that we would like, that they would like us to consider at future meetings? Or you think we have enough already? Cynthia?
Once again, do I need to keep bringing up the sign?
Yeah, I believe it's on the list. Yeah, I believe it's on the list, but yeah, it's in, it's in the mix somewhere.
It is in, it is in the, yeah, and we've had discussions about this, it's just that because of the nature of the beast, it has, it will take tons of time to do, and they're in the middle of doing a lot of other projects, and once some of those are finished, then we'll move on to that, because that will be a chunk of time, promise, okay?
Yeah.
And I also have one, which is my favorite topic, fire.
That's what I was going to ask, isn't, hadn't we spoken about having the fire chief come?
Yeah, he'll come anytime we ask him.
Yeah, and that's, and we did, I believe the Construction Standards Board is now fully seated, so we'll be able to start picking up some of the Chapter 3 code, so the fire code is one of those on the list.
And I just want to echo, I think Carrie said last time, I would appreciate a workshop, particularly since we do have a lot of new members, just to go over the code and kind of understand the basics.
Okay. Do you like that to be a separate workshop, or maybe I'll get with you Debbie to kind of talk that, because we do have, for the next several meetings, we will have Jake back to go over the study for the transportation impact fees, and so you'll, you'll get a couple more sessions with Jake, so, we'll be spending some time doing that as well, so.
Given that, that we have workshops, we probably need to be on a different night, I would think.
So we'll send out a time, maybe a poll, see what's, what's a good time for y'all.
Okay. Anything else? And we will move on to the next item. Make a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, in a second?
Second.
Thank you, we're adjourned.